No, you're not allowed. Kevin? Kevin, you're not allowed.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, September 16th, 2024. Let the record reflect the meeting to begin at 6:30. We'd like to make recognition that all members of the council are present with the exception of Councilor Berman, who has been excused, and with us tonight we do have Deputy Administrator Pat Fox. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the item, item number four this evening is Committee Correspondence to Council. Is there any correspondence wishing to be stated? Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Moving on to item number five this evening is General. There is no General this evening, but I would like to extend a happy birthday wish to Councilor Johnston, who shared her birth happen to celebrate her birthday this weekend. Yeah, that now takes us to item number six, and that is Public Comment. We do have two members of the public signed up, and the first is Kevin Roach. Please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to address council.
Hi, Kevin Roach, 18 Vines Road. I'm here to congratulate Pat Fox for being named Cape Elizabeth Town Manager, and your administrative update tonight better be good, all right?[622.16][622.16](Laughter). I joined Saco City Council in 2013, soon after Pat became Public Works Director, I believe, 2012. There were four new councilors that year, all of us looking for a pound of flesh, as there were a couple of department heads, now long gone, that basically did what they wanted. I remember what a breath of fresh air it was, talking, hearing from Pat, that regardless of what the debate was and what we were looking for, if there was any, you know, disagreements with that, he was there to implement what the council and what the city wanted. The best quote often from Pat, at times with exasperation, if I get it exact right, was like, "I just need to know what you want to do. That's all. That's all." It was just great to hear that. We had our disagreements, but always friendly in the end with some laughs. And Counselor Johnston and I could just grab the popcorn and watch you and Counselor Precord go at it for a whole meeting, so, which by the way, Diamond Dave wishes you his best. He couldn't make it tonight, so. But most of all, I'm here to thank Pat for his leadership and all the work he's done for our shoreline. After council, of course, became President of Save Our Shores Saco Bay, there is no way the Army Corps is here now, and no way the dredge program gets off the ground without Pat's leadership. No way. We had, together, we had made drives up to Augusta. We had gone up there for the Saco, to get their Saco River dredge approved, connect with Bitterford at the time, and then also to untable, I believe it was the week before COVID, to untable Plan Six with the Army Corps. We got that, we got that in. Maybe it was Zoom. I don't know. No, it wasn't Zoom yet, but. And when a lot of people are not around in the winter, Pat was personally down at the shoreline, making sure shoreline damage was cleaned up and roads are ready to go in the spring. You couldn't please everyone, residents or staff, certainly harbor masters, but there was no one who works better with others than Pat, and Cape Elizabeth is lucky to have him, and so has been Saco. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, next up we have David Plaven.
I'm David Plaven. I live at 36 Lower Beach Road, formerly Two Surf Street, when I moved there, seven and a half years ago. Then Public Works Director Pat Fox came to my coastal home and spent 30 minutes explaining to me what was happening in Camp Ellis and along the coast. Two years later, when I had some significant property damage, I showed up at his office unannounced, and he spent 20 minutes with me to explain what I needed to do. Personal service is a trademark of Pat's, and it may well be the reason I'm still here. That was just part of the amazing effort that Pat and Public Works Department has undertaken too many times to count. As most of us know, Pat will be leaving Saco at the end of the month to become Town Manager for Cape Elizabeth. Pat, you'll be greatly missed. I know you'll do a great job, although I saw the tax collector as part of your responsibility, so a 100% approval rating is going to be really difficult for you to attain, but if anyone can do it, it's you. Pat leaves a huge void in our efforts to make our coastline more resilient. For example, he's the point person for the Army Corps 111 project to build a breakwater to mitigate wave damage. That project now has traction, and along with our city administrator is moving forward on schedule. Pat has been instrumental in moving us toward a dredge of the river channel this upcoming season to get sand moved to Camp Ellis and beyond. In July, Pat introduced a consultant he is working with to get us, as he put it, "a much-needed comprehensive beach management plan." The county is now involved, and he is keeping all the pieces in sync. Pat was a major contributor to the city's climate action and adoption plan that will be brought forward to council in the coming months. Pat, with the help of Emily Prescott, secured a $1.25 million grant to replace a culvert and elevate the intersection at the entrance of Camp Ellis. That work is being planned for next year. He has projects to make the coast more resilient for the upcoming storm season. It won't be easy, but we can do all this. The city is hiring a coastal engineer, and we can start updating the status report from plan to work in progress to complete it. Each time we do that, it will remind us of how important the work you did for Saco and all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay, if there is any other member of the public wishing to speak, please step forward and state your name and address. Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Moving on to item seven, that is the Approval of the Minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes dated?
So moved.
August 26, 2024.
Excuse me. Yes, so moved.
Motion made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hewitt. Any discussion on the minutes? Okay, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes passes 6-0. Takes us now to item eight, and that is the Consent Items. There is one item this evening, and that is the Application for a Solid Waste Permit. Troiano Waste Services. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the consent item?
Motion made, motion made by Counselor Hatch, second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion or comments for the consent items? Okay, not seeing any. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Okay, moving on to item number nine, and that is Action Items. First item this evening, item A is a public hearing. The renewal application for a special entertainment permit for the Bitterford Saco Elks Lodge, number 1597, and that is Counselor Johnston. I'm sorry, Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Bitterford Saco Elks Lodge, number 1597, is applied for the renewal of their special entertainment permit. The permit will be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees, and the clerk has properly advertised the public hearing in accordance with the Saco City Code, Chapter 93, Entertainment, Subsection 93-2. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion has been made to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to open the public hearing passes 6-0. If there is any member of the public wishing to speak, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Counselor Gunn?
Thank you. I move to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the city council grant the renewal application submitted by Bitterford Saco Elks Lodge, number 1597, for a special entertainment permit to be concurrent with the establishment's current liquor license. I move to approve the order.
Motion to close the public hearing made by Counselor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion or comments? Okay, not seeing any. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Okay, item B this evening is another public hearing. Renewal application for a special entertainment permit for Island Brewing LLC, DBA the Run-of-the-Mill, and that is Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. Island Brewing LLC, doing business as Run-of-the-Mill, has applied for the renewal of their special entertainment permit. The permit will be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees, and the clerk has properly advertised public hearing in accordance with the Saco City Code, Chapter 93, Entertainment, Section 93-2. Moved open the public hearing.
Motion has been made to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Archer. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to open the public hearing passes 6-0. Any members of the public wishing to speak on this item, please step forward and state your name and address. Counselor Johnston?
Move to close the public hearing. Be it ordered that the city council grant the renewal application submitted by Island Brewing LLC, doing business as Run-of-the-Mill, for a special entertainment permit to be concurrent with the establishment's current liquor license. Move to approve the order.
Motion has been made to close the public hearing by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hewitt. Any discussion on the item? Okay, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to close the public hearing passes 6-0. Now takes us to item number C, and that's the final reading, Chapter 166, Public Spaces and Parks, and that is Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. Staff have compiled a new draft ordinance, Chapter 166, Public Spaces and Parks. The draft ordinance has been reviewed by the city solicitor, Tim Murphy. Be it ordered that the city of Saco hereby ordains Chapter 166, Public Spaces and Parks as presented.
Motion has been made by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gunn. Any discussion or comments on this item? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. So, as I previously indicated several weeks back, I had thought about potential amendments. Given the fact that we have this broken-up schedule during the summer, I feel like we've kind of lost some of the momentum there, and nothing that I would have been proposing was of such substance that it can't wait. I think it's important we just get it in place. So, I mean, like I said before, they really were clarifying things like uses and activities, the cross-references, a reporting of some kind, how to deal with, you know, like possessions if the city was to move somebody on. But, like I said, mainly because I'd like to further work with Parks and Rec staff, but also the committee, and I missed the last committee meeting, and so I just, I think we just pass this and address it. Like I said, during the winter, it probably would make more sense. But I would offer one amendment based off what Counselor Gunn had sent us in relation to camping or use of private lands or spaces. The way it reads currently, it says, "No person or family may camp temporarily on private property. If found to be doing so without the owner's permission, they will be asked by the police department to leave and take all the possessions." I think that, well, I feel, I think Counselor Gunn feels, that it kind of implies that by enacting it as-is, nobody will be allowed to camp on somebody's property, and I don't think that was my intent. So, obviously, if you're a property owner and you had a family member come over and you wanted to allow them to pitch a tent on your lawn, I don't think that was something we were trying to forbid. So, I mean, I guess the amendment would be simply to strike temporarily, so it would read, "No person or family may camp on private property," and then I would add, "Without the owner's permission." I guess that's actually there, so I take that back. Just strike temporarily and remove the period, so it's one sentence. So, "No person or family may camp temporarily," strike that, "on private property without the owner's permission." And then that second sentence, just strike without the owner's permission, so it's, "If found to be doing so, they will be asked by the police department to leave and take all the possessions." If that makes sense. And you can provide that to Madam Mayor.
Oh, you got it written out. Okay. Okay, is everyone clear on the amendment? Okay, so a motion has been made to amend Section 166-4 of the public space. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gunn. Any discussion or comments? Counselor Hewitt?
If there's a neighbor of this land, and there's, you know, any health concerns or debris, do they have a recourse?
Can you repeat the question?
Oh, there's. If there's a neighbor of an abutting land that somebody says people can camp on, and they're parting loud, or there's debris, or there's human waste, would the abutting neighbors have any protection under this ordinance?
Counselor Archer?
I would just argue it would have nothing to do with this ordinance. Would it be dealing with any type of other law, criminal law, or even just negligence, or all those other nuisance laws that we have? I think that's how it would be enforced. I wouldn't want to enforce it through this one, me personally.
Counselor Johnston?
That was my thought, is that those activities would fall under the good neighbor ordinance. So if you had somebody that had unhealthy sanitation issues or whatever, we'd be able to, you know, enforce it under that. So, I think there's protections.
Because I think my, I think my fear is that if we were to put it anywhere in here, is that then you could just say, "Oh, my neighbor's kids are tenting in their backyard, and I don't like it." That has no, if we were to put it here, I fear that. I say just allow current law and ordinances to override, well, not override, but Chief is here, he can explain.
We do have Chief Clemens here that can address this as well.
So the scenario that you gave, we would give them a warning for disorderly conduct. If they didn't abide by the warning, then we'd take enforcement through state statute. It's always better to tackle these things through state statute than through an ordinance.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call vote on the amendment only. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Amendment passes 6-0. Back to the main motion. Any additional questions or comments? Okay, not seeing. All right, roll call vote on the main motion. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Counsel, I'm sorry, Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Okay, that now takes us to item D, and that's a final reading for the parking plan and fee schedule change for 142 Main Street parking lot, and that is Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. In September of 2023, the city purchased a downtown parcel for the expansion of public parking opportunities for shopping, dining, and public transportation access. A portion of this lot is leased to the abutting apartment complex for tenant parking. The remaining spaces shall be designated for short or long-term parking and free or paid parking areas as determined by the city council. Be it ordered that the city of Saco hereby ordains the amendments to Chapter 211-80 municipal parking lots and the city of Saco fee schedule as presented slash amended. I move to approve the order.
Motion has been made by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion or comments on the item? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I just have several comments, but they're kind of overlapping from my past comments on this, and similar to the last ordinance, I think everything I was going to say can be addressed at a later date. I do think it's important we get this in place. So, just for starters, you know, as I had pointed out previously, or I had asked questions about the Water Street Lot, and obviously, well, maybe not obviously, but Attorney Murphy has responded to some level. I still lacks clarity for me personally, but I will take that up with the city administration. And again, specifically, we list Water Street Lot as a public law, which, based on Attorney Murphy's opinion, it's really not a public law, so I considered striking that right now, but I'll leave it for the time being. And then, you know, the pricing was obviously a sticking point for me, just given the financial, significant financial investment that the city has put towards this. I feel it's kind of on the low side compared to several other communities. But again, taking into account what the city administration said before, you know, obviously, we can adjust this, and of course, I asked for that lease. It was twofold. I wanted to, number one, approve it like we should have, but also I wanted to know what those rates were and what And what I discovered was that those 20 spots are paying roughly $1.66 a day. So, while I think it's undervalued, I can't really justify having extreme differences in prices from our current leases. So, I'm good with the 250, I guess it is. And then, of course, there's the question of the dedicated funds or not a dedicated fund. I think that, you know, city administration said we can bring that up at a later date, which I'm advocating for. I don't want to lose that, you know, drop it off the radar. But, like I said, we can wait on that. And then, also, I'd like to just overall review parking penalties. From my quick review, they seem lower than surrounding communities. So, again, just something to look into. And then, this is just, I guess, a personal thing for me, kind of a clerical thing. And I recognize that the city administrator's not here. I'm sure he's watching, or he will, and he'll hear my comments. But preference going forward with this, or any, anytime we have an amendment to an ordinance or a new ordinance, I would prefer we separate the two issues, because the way I read this motion in, and I think this really keeps in line with what Charter implies, which is that, you know, a motion should only have one subject. But here we, as I read it in, we are addressing an ordinance change, Chapter 211, and then we're also adopting a fee schedule. So, minor, I would say, obviously, but in, just for the transparency purpose of it and the historical record, it would have been better if they were two separate agenda items, we address them. Because, you know, sometimes it's best you think like a counselor. Because I look at this, and not that, like I said, I'll support it, but what if I didn't support the rate that we decided upon? I would have been forced to vote against the ordinance changed because we combined the two. So, just imparting my wisdom, I guess, in that regard. Outside of that, I don't think I have anything else.
Anyone else? Counselor Archer?
Mine's quick, but it's not going to change my position on moving this forward. It's related to the funding. I had mentioned it the last time. We also have an ordinance that may be in contradiction once we pass this. I don't remember it word for word, but it was a conversation we did have. I believe Counselor Berman brought it up. For me, it's more about the splitting of the funds and where the parking revenues go. I'm not going to get caught up on that, but again, it will be past my time, so I just want to put it out there as well. My concern is what happens if the Camp Ellis parking lot gets severely destroyed, and then we take the funds away from our Amtrak station, where those funds should be at the Amtrak station. So, I'm still on board that we should have separate funds. Not enough to make me delay this by any means, but in the future, we should be looking at that on how the funds collected through all parking spots are dispersed throughout the city. That's it. Thanks.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Gunn?
Just to get this on the record, though, because I fully understand where Counselors Archer and Johnston are coming from in terms of having, for lack of a better term, because I have schools in my head for some reason, separate costs, as cost centers of where that money's coming from. Would it be best practice to wait until the budget season? I think that, I'm not sure if that was what the city administrator suggested, or just waiting until, I don't know, it gets quieter in January and just put in a simple amendment to this ordinance? I mean, what do we think the best practice would be on this?
Counselor Archer?
Yeah, just in rebuttal, it's really about what happens when we have the budget pressures, when all of a sudden we start neglecting one parking area because of another, because of budget pressures. It's more about that. Again, you can always have more expenses than you do revenues, and that would be a budget call. I just would be worried of like significant damage that's not covered by FEMA or something like that to one parking lot, and then all of a sudden we start to neglect our others. And that's really all it comes down to.
Does that help answer your question?
Certainly, but also just to the point that, to Counselor Archer's point, if there is, if it is in conflict, which, and I, based on the debate we had last week, I can see the interpretation of that, though. Certainly, we want to just clear up the language as soon as possible, because I don't like the idea of passing something if common sense says that it may have, be in conflict with pre-existing ordinance, or doesn't clearly overwrite pre-existing ordinance. So, sooner we can get this on the agenda, you know, in the coming months to clear it up, though, I think I'd be more than happy with it. Thank you.
We do have the finance director with us this evening. If you would like a little more clarification on how that process will work.
That'd be lovely.
Jerry, you willing to come up and?
So, I believe you're talking about the 1/3, and that goes to Camp Ellis and Bayview. We can either continue to do that, or we could do, pull it however you wanted. Currently, we're just doing an allocation for what comes in every month. So, we could continue, or?
Well, what's currently presented is the complete deletion of that whole...
Right, so we could put it back, or we could do different amounts. It's whatever the council decides.
So, is there currently one parking?
Yes.
Line item, and then it's dispersed if Camp Ellis needs it, if the train station?
No, it's an automatic, 1/3 goes to Camp Ellis and 1/3 to Bayview.
Oh, okay. Counselor Johnston?
Yeah, I think, if I remember correctly, the city administrator had indicated, you know, he'd like it this way, and we'd address it at budget time. It's not my preference, just because I hear that often, and then the budget comes, and we get so bogged down in the budget, we forget about those things. So, I've kind of, you know, it's obviously, Counselor Gunn, you'll be here, but I, well, we think you'll be here.
Okay.
Well...
Say, what have you heard?
I'm just, can't make any assumptions. I've already added it to my own kind of...
Okay.
To-do list. So, I agree, I'd like to address it soon, but obviously, you know, January probably sounds pretty good to me.
Okay.
So...
Everybody understand where it's allocated now and how it gets dispersed?
With this ordinance, we're striking that. It's going entirely to the general fund.
I'll just add that the, all of the parking fees collected are tracked by location. So, that was one of the reasons to potentially just get rid of this blanket, third, a third, a third. So, I think you can, you could still look back. You're going to know what parking meter people paid. You're going to know how long they stayed in which parking lot and all of that. So, then you can reallocate the funds, to Counselor Archer's point, if you want them to stay where they were generated. You can do that without language that just says a third, a third, a third. So, those reports of the parking from last season, or the first six, three to six months of this new parking lot, you can have those as your data points to decide where they go. So, those could be tracked and separated a lot better than they used to be able to when you just kind of guessed by where someone may have parked with a sticker, so.
Thank you. Hey, anyone else? Yes, so Counselor Gunn, this will, if you, you know, we choose to, we can bring this back first of the year. Okay, not seeing anyone else with questions or comments. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Okay, that completes the action items for this evening. That takes us to item 10, and that's new business. And we do have a report on ARPA funds. And I believe Finance Director Mathewin's coming. Are you presenting with?
I thought, Madam Mayor, I thought I'd run through, I'd run through the products, the projects to start. And then, if you have any questions about remaining allocations or any funds that may be left at the end of this fiscal year, Finance Director can help out with that portion. So, there was a spreadsheet attached. So, ARPA funds came to the city basically for fiscal year '23 and '24. The critical point coming up that staff has been tracking is that those funds have to be either spent or allocated and under contract by the end of this calendar year. So, there was approximately half of the 2.1 million was allocated, and projects were selected in FY '23. The other half was done during your FY '24 budget process. So, if you look down through the list, a number of the projects are completed, and staff has been tracking the ones that are not. So, you'll see a lot of them, like the Affordable Housing Plan. That housing plan, RFP, is due 9/23. So, as soon as that comes in, a contractor or consultant is selected. As soon as the purchase order is written for that, those funds are all set. You have another two years after that to use them, so. Same with the bypass road to, from Smith Lane to Stockman. That was a matter of getting through design survey, and the design consultants are giving us a final quote for that, to finish that project up. The citywide infrastructure plan, about half of that plan is funded with ARPA funds, so that purchase order can be done, and that $73,000 will show as allocated. Working on down, the one project that still needs a little bit of work is the county dredge operations, $156,744. Given that the county has taken over more of that dredge operation planning, and they're also doing some significant steps of beach management plans along the entire York County coast. So, John Behanko is working with the county administrator to find a way to allocate those funds through the county to their consultants and to the permitting efforts for the dredging that's going to occur. So, just have to find that mechanism to write that purchase order and get that over to them. We have large culvert that's going to be replaced on Boom Road, so that $214,000, that's just one of several funding mechanisms for that project. That's an over $500,000 project. Some ongoing facility projects, IT investment, a small amount of funds left that'll be spent investing in hybrid meeting or technology upgrades to the auditorium. Parks has some projects that are underway. Materials have been delivered, and contractors are getting ready to do the work, so that money will be spent down. Same with Prentice Park. Parks and Rec had to wait on some environmental permitting decisions before they could put the contract out and award that. And the only one on here that I, so the $200,000 for the School Street Teen Center, that was actually, in 2023, council took an action when that building was going to be getting sold to move those funds into the 2024 budget process. So, when we went through capital for the 2024 budget, that was part of the presentation that then Finance Budget Manager Salas gave at that time. So, those $200,000, that $200,000 for the teen center has already been reprogrammed in these other projects that we've listed. So, that one shouldn't say 200 and 200 available. It was actually 200 originally, then brought back to the capital plan and funded other projects. So, that's the status. There's a lot of funds remaining, but they're all well underway of getting allocated. I would say there's perhaps one more chance, if anything happens to get canceled or a project comes in under budget, you know, in November, the council could choose to allocate any remaining funds. By that time, I think you'd be down to an exact number. You could look to allocate any remaining funds to one of the other projects that has several other funding mechanisms that could be repurposed into next budget season and don't have the same deadlines that the ARPA funds have. So, that's staff update on the actual projects.
Any questions or comments for Director Fox? Counselor Johnston?
Not so much a question. Yeah, I mean, I just thought it was important we had this update, so thank you for it. I think all my questions were just answered, so I just, just to thank you for the update.
Okay, great, anyone else? Okay, that completes the new business item. Item number 11 this evening, there is no administrative update. Item number 12, council discussing and comment. Any counselors wishing to speak? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. So, I think, I don't know. I obviously know, because I look out the window and I see the river. But for you, those that don't, I think that if you take a look at the river, you'll see that it's incredibly low right now. And I know that there are some particularly up from my way that are upset largely, you know, your way, I'm sure. You've probably heard, largely because of the lack of notice from Brookfield. They just lowered the river to work on the dam, which is fine and all, but they didn't really do a great job of noticing. I think they noticed Bitford, but I don't know of Saco, but certainly not property owners. Regardless of all that, it is what it is. You know, I took the opportunity, I think it was on Friday. My son went out on Water Street near Jubilee, go do a little treasure hunting, I'll call it, because it's the first time you can actually walk out on that sandbar. I guess this is just my plug for being better stewards of the river, because I have largely most of my life, you know, I've heard the horror stories of the Saco River. You know, Counselor Hatch, you might remember them back in the 60s, not to age you, but I've always thought it was relatively clean. And then I go out there, and it's like, you know, my son jokingly said to me, "I think an entire car is in here," because I counted 15 tires. I counted, I mean, endless trash. And I know it didn't all happen in the last, you know, five, 10 years. It's just, it was kind of disgusting. So, you know, it's just my plug there for being, you know, better stewards of our environment. But equally, it also gave me an opportunity to kind of move further up and see infrastructure that I haven't seen in my lifetime because of where the water was. So, again, I'm no engineer, don't pretend to be, but I do know a little thing or two about construction. And I would just say, fortunately, we have Director Fox here, who does have this background, but I would ask that city staff contact DOT and go and inspect the Elm Street Bridge. Because I know it supposedly, I looked it up, there's an entire segment of DOT that does bridge inspections, and I'm sure they do them rather frequently. But I don't know if they've had the opportunity to see it with practically no water in the river, because those pilings or, you know, what holds up those bridge is actually alarming to me how eroded some of them are. I mean, we're talking about a V shape instead of a square shape. Except I'm not an engineer, maybe it's safe, but you have that opportunity to inspect them. I know other people have commented, you know, the same thing to me. So, I just would ask that we kind of do that inspection. I'd rather be ahead of it than, you know, it's certainly not looking for more construction in my area, but I'd much rather have the construction repair bridge versus there be no bridge, and we are rerouting all the traffic down to Main Street. So, I mean, I'll send some pictures to council, so they can see what I'm talking about. But it was rather alarming to me. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you. I originally didn't have anything until Counselor Johnston brought up an awesome strategy. Let's just, can we broaden it? Can we take the drone? Can we look at the things that we'd never be able to see before, and we take this as an opportunity, not just the bridge, but any other city assets that we possibly have? How often do you have the ability to drone a river for our benefit? So, maybe if we, again, just take a drone, preliminary, you, our staff are the experts on this, but this is an opportunity to see that what would cost us thousands or more if we ever try to do it in the future. We have this unique opportunity. And again, I wasn't even thinking this until Counselor Johnston brought it up, and I think it's a great idea. It's a great opportunity that we have that we'd never have.
I'll just add, in that sense, that the news crew was actually out there this afternoon doing just that. They were there to report on the dam issue, and they happened to look around and go, "Wow, that's an issue." So, they put their own drone out there. So, I mean, obviously, you know, there's that. Just lost my train of thought with it. Gosh. Yeah, so it'll be it.
Okay, thank you both. Anything else? Okay, not seeing anyone. Takes us to item 13, and that's an adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hewitt. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
No, I still have plenty of time left.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
In the interest of time, yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Definitely, yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes five one. At seven zero, at 7:09. Thank you, everyone, and have a great evening.